Right, good morning everyone, sorry for the slightly delayed start and welcome to the Licensing Subcommittee this morning, also apologies that we can't shut the doors because the roof's leaking and we have to have buckets underneath, so thankfully it is a public meeting, otherwise we might be in trouble, so the building's crumbling as much as I am at the moment. So, we'll just start with some quick introductions, I'm David Markraby, chairing the Subcommittee this morning, and to my right is the member of the Subcommittee who'd like to introduce yourself, please.
Good morning, councillor O'Shinken.
You will notice a number of the people in the room today who were the officers of the council were working with us this morning, would you like to introduce yourselves, please?
Morning, I'm Carol Curtin, legal adviser to the Licensing Subcommittee.
My name's Jack Reisley-Boy, also from Legal Services, here to make a note of the hearing this morning, thank you.
Shimla Finch, I'm from the Licensing Service and I'll be presenting my report.
And I'm Jenny Skiba from Democratic Services, just take the minutes.
And could I ask you to just confirm your name and why you're here, please, just for the record?
Andrew Cunio.
And Neil Gibson, representing Mr. Cunio.
Joe Pearce, representing the Parks and Countryside Service.
Morning, Joe. As I say, you're all very welcome to the meeting this morning, if you could try and remember, I've said this on myself as well, to use the microphones when you speak because acoustics in here aren't great and sometimes the radiators start rattling as well, which is another thing that's developed overnight. There's a fairly straightforward procedure for these hearings, firstly, the Licensing Officer, O'Shimla, this morning, will just detail the report, which hopefully you've had a copy of, there's then a chance for members and for yourselves to ask any questions regarding that report or question anything that's in it, just to make sure it's accurate, because that's what we're working on this morning. Once we're happy that the report's accurate, then it's down to the applicant, which is Mr. Cunio and his representative, just to detail your application and provide any clarification regarding the representations that have been made regarding your application. Once you've had the opportunity to do that, then members of the committee and officers have the chance to ask you questions regarding anything that's in the report or anything you've said in your representations, and we'll also open that up to Parks and Countryside to ask any questions they may have. Following that, then, the interested parties, which today is the Parks and Countryside representative, will have the chance to detail their representations, and again, the same process, members, officers and yourselves will have the chance to ask them any questions regarding their representations as well. Once we get to that stage, then, the interested parties will firstly have the opportunity to sum up and just tell us the key points that they wish us to take into account, and then you will have the opportunity to sum up and tell us the key points that you wish us to take into account. We'll then ask the Licensing Office to provide us with the options available to us, at that stage we'll ask you to leave the room with the Licensing Officer or we take legal advice and come to a decision. As soon as we've made that decision, we'll invite you back in and tell you what that decision is. Basically, everybody has a chance to have a full say this morning, we all have a chance to ask each other questions, and at the end of it, members will make a decision based on what you tell us this morning and the legal advice given to us on that, it's fairly simple. So, if we're happy with that, could we have the report, please, Shimla?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This report is to consider an application to a new static street trading consent on Ruslins Road in Sheffield. The renewal application was made by Mr. Cunio and Mrs. Clardy, 7th November 22. The application documents, a map of the site location is at Appendix B of the report. The application was consulted with relevant authorities within the consultation period and the application has been referred to the Licensing Committee as we received an objection by Sheffield City Council's Parks and Countryside Service. The objection relates to similar concessions which have been granted within the park's land and the impact the applicant's consent is having on their charitable trust. A full copy of the objection is attached to Appendix B of the report. Paragraph 4.3 of the report details information related to the trader and the concessions within the park and when the consents were first issued. To assist members, a map has been produced at Appendix C of the report to show the location of the concessions within the park, which includes a street trader and the applicant's location outside the park. Since the publication of the report, various support letters for the applicant has been received and the applicant has forwarded a sample of them which has been circulated to members and parties before the meeting. We've also received a petition yesterday which has also been circulated. As this objection has been unresolved, the renewal application has been referred to the Licensing Subcommittee for determination. Members are advised to consider all documentation and to refer to the street trading policy, in particular to paragraph 2.8 in regards to factors considered in granting or renewing street trading applications. The applicant's and the objective invited to attend the Licensing Subcommittee meeting, copies of the invites and the hearing procedure is attached at Appendix D. There are no financial implications arising from this report and members are recommended to consider all relevant information available and the council's street trading policy. Thank you.
Lewis, do you have any questions regarding the report at all, later? Neil, have you any questions regarding the report?
Not quite, so I just wanted, just to confirm that only one objection's been received, the police, fire, highways, planning, no one else has objected to this, just parks?
No, just the one objection.
Thank you.
Excellent. So, if we're happy with the report, then it's over to you, Neil, and Mr. Cunio, to state your case to us this morning and detail the application.
Thank you, Chair, thank you very much. My client, Mr. Cunio, has operated an ice cream concession within Encliff Park for more than 10 years, until he lost it last year, and he's been outside for more than 28 years. He's always complied with everything that Parks and Countryside wanted from him, he consulted with them over the specifications of his new van to make sure they'd be happy with it, and now all his vans in the city all meet the Euro 6 standard. When the tender for the site inside Encliff Park came up, Mr. Cunio, who held the tender, bid what he felt was a reasonable and fair bid for the tender per year, and that was based on his 10 years of experience in trading in the park and based on the profit he knew was making each year, and he thought it was a sensible figure that he could manage. Unfortunately, a new vendor bid, I'm not sure of the figure, but it was, I'm told it was an extraordinarily large amount of money. I'm not an ice cream vendor, but I do have a number of them as clients, and I've dealt with their accounts for several years, and so I think Mr. Cunio's tender of 12 was quite reasonable based on the profit that he makes. It now appears that the new vendor has realised after a year's trading, they cannot possibly pay the tender fee because they're not making enough money, and so they may be renegotiating with parks, I'm sure parks will let us know if they are, they've turned on what they see as a perceived rival, and so parks are now objecting because they're, as I understand, and I can understand their side of it, they're a charity and they see that they're not going to get the money they thought they would get, so they're now turning to Mr. Cunio. Now, as some of you might recall, David will know this, I've served in this committee for over 10 years, and in that time, I've dealt with a number of street trading licences, with objections from other shops who felt that they were too close to them, and I think over the years, the committee came to the view that a street trader, so long as it was not within 500 metres of an existing premises, was able to trade, as it was deemed that it was open and fair competition, and I hope the committee might take the view or consider the view that having more than one ice cream trader in the park and one outside the park is fair competition and gives the people of Ecclesall a choice. I would point out the current trader appears to be selling a wide range of iced goods and does compete directly with the cafe, who also sell some iced goods. Mr. Cunio has a long-term relationship with the cafe in the park and they have agreed not to cross-sell, so what Mr. Cunio sells on Ruslins Road, the cafe does not sell. You will note from the map that Mr. Cunio's van has parked a good distance from the van in the park, and I have done, well, I've known Encliff Park a long time, I think most people enter the park from the Hunter's Bar entrance or from the Bingham Park entrance, not necessarily from the Ruslins Road entrance, so I think most people don't go past Mr. Cunio's van on Ruslins Road. You'll have in your pack a large number of messages from the public, a lot of, and especially one I might point out, the local councillor, Barbara Masters, who's made it very clear that she's supporting Mr. Cunio, and that she hopes that they take it, all this public support is taken into account by the committee. There's a letter of support from Ashley, who has run the park and the cafe for decades now, I think, he's very supportive, and if you're just flicking through the Facebook comments, a lot of them talk about, they think people should have the choice of where they buy their ice creams from, and they value Mr. Cunio's ice cream because they think it's a much better quality than other offerings, and I won't read you the comments about oppressive council and council of concer- senses, because I'm sure you've read all those comments, I say there is a, there is a large number of the public are very concerned about this, and I think it's evidenced, again, by Saturday Night's Star, which laid on this story, and if you look on the Star website, it's a huge number of comments from the public supporting Mr. Cunio. So I hope that the committee, taking into account the many years Mr. Cunio has traded in the ice cream trade in various places in Sheffield, always paid the fees due, including 10 years contributing to Encliff Park and contributed substantially to the income of the charity over those years. Some people might think that Mr. Cunio's been penalised by the overestimate of income by a third party, i.e. the trader in the park, with which he has no connection, so I'd ask again that you consider the evidence and consider the considerable report, support from local people for what they see as a very local, popular trader who sells the best ice cream in Sheffield, and I'm only sorry we don't have samples with us today to give to the committees, I suspect that might be seen as bribery.
We would have to refuse those, as you know. Thank you, happy for me to open this up to questions then, Neil? Are you happy for me to open this up to questions?
Yes, please, Chair. Just in relation to tenders in previous years and the rates that have been granted, what is the sort of change over time in that regard, where's the sort of trajectory in terms of the amount and the rent over previous years, has it gone up, stayed the same?
Well, I asked this to Mr. Cunio earlier, he thinks you were paying about six and a half thousand in the early days, and that's been based on the trade that he's done, he bid the 12,000 in 2022, but he felt that was quite a stretch, and now considering the trade in the last year and ice cream sales in Sheffield has gone on quite a dying hill trajectory, I think he's thinking that that was just about as close as he probably could have got, so anybody bidding more than that probably would have, would be struggling to reach the tender value.
Thank you, and just to confirm, there's been no renewal of the licence since the new licensee came into Encliff Park, actually inside the park, there's been no renewal of Mr. Cunio's licence?
No, because Mr. Cunio lost that tender because he didn't bid enough money, the new ten, the new person in the park now bid a higher amount than Mr. Cunio, and we believe that's why parks gave him the tender. Now it appears that he cannot now achieve what he promised because the trade isn't good enough, and so parks are saying, well, we're losing money, I think they've quoted 15,000 that they're now going to lose, and they're saying that because of the competition on Ruslins Road, but we would argue that Mr. Cunio's not taking anywhere near that profit at Ruslins Road, so we don't see how that figure is achieved, but I may well ask parks that in detail later, or you may want to ask that question, parks?
Could I just seek a point of clarity, you said you've operated a van outside of Encliff Park for 28 years and inside for 10 years, does this mean you previously run the two vans simultaneously, one in the park and one on Ruslins Road?
There was one in Hunter's Bar and one inside the park, did you run them together, Andrew?
Uncertain, yes, yes.
Which days of the week did you run them?
Mainly weekends.
So mainly weekends, he ran both vans were in operation?
Historically, there have been two vans there, one inside and one outside of the park, this is what I'm trying to get at, this is, not suddenly moved there when you lost the tender for the park, it was a case you had previously operated outside the park?
That's correct, yeah.
You've answered it, yeah?
Do officers have any questions to Mr. Cunio and his representative?
Yes, I just want to clarify, when you say, I understand he lost a tender, a higher bid, what, but then, in essence, money has been lost through the higher bid, what is the relationship then between that loss of earnings and Mr. Cunio, is that right?
Cunio.
Cunio, I do apologise, I must have been thinking about going on a ship. Do you understand what I'm saying, I'm trying to grasp the implications, why does it impact on Mr. Cunio?
Well, we don't know what the new tender, how much the new tender was for.
Yeah, I understand that.
There are rumours and suspicions that, you know, you may want to ask Parks Department if they'll disclose the value of the new tender, in the report, parks have said that they're losing 15,000 pounds a year, so I can only assume that what they're meaning is that it was a much larger tender of more than 12, and therefore the new, the person holding the tender in the park, after a summer in 2022 of trading, has realised he's not taking enough money to be able to pay to parks what he promised them, so it's obviously at least 15,000 pounds, but I would suspect it's a lot more, because that would appear, but it's some, it's summation on my part, and we don't have any access to that evidence. What parks appear to be saying is that he's losing trade in the park because of competition outside the park, and my argument would be that competition is good for the public, and looking through the Facebook posts, the comments on the Stars page, I think the public would agree that they want the competition, they see it as a good thing.
Thank you very much.
Shimla, is there anything you would like to ask?
No, that's good, thank you.
Joe, is it, would you like to ask any questions of the applicants?
Might be just worth a point of clarity, just around the question that Neil, yeah, just with regards to commercial sensitivity, it wouldn't be appropriate to share the value of the licence, but just-
Are you sure that would be the case?
Yeah, but just to clarify, there were a number of other higher bids for both Encliff Park and Weston Park, which Mr. Cunio was also not awarded, so we're not just talking about one vendor here, and I think that's important because sadly in the, you know, as things go on social media, it's an understandable one-sided argument, but there is a good quality operator there who's getting a bit of a unkind backlash, so, you know, we're talking about a number of other operators here who did bid higher. Also, just to highlight, the Encliff, Millhouses, Graves, Hillsborough Park, these are our, you know, high footfall parks in the city, and we know the market value of those across ice cream pitches, and what Mr. Cunio bid on the pitch at Encliff was considerably lower, not just at Encliff, but across the board of those sites, but I won't go into the specific figures because that wouldn't be appropriate.
Thank you, if you've no questions for the applicant, then it's over to you to detail your representations this morning.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So the Parks and Countryside Service are objecting to the licence application as we believe, as Neil's highlighted, that their occupation of this location is conflicting with other concessions granted to existing street traders, as per section 2.8 of the street trading policy, which states whether the trading in a particular location will conflict with concessions granted to other existing street traders. We have clear evidence that the Ruslins Road ice cream trade adversely impacts the value of the pitch inside the park and anticipate an ongoing annual loss of charity park income of at least 15,000 annually as a direct result. We know this not from just the existing agreement with the vendor within the park, but also the bids that came when we carried out the process. We believe there are already sufficient traders in this locality and that there is no public benefit to there being an ice cream van so close to others, Ruslins Road as opposed to the Hunter's Bar pitch you were talking about earlier, Chair. For context, last year, several parks concessions were due for re-tender for the 22/25 period, this ensures that Sheffield City Council, and in this case the charity, as Encliff Park is held in charitable trust, is getting best value, market value for its concessions, pitches, cafes and sites. As with all council commercial business, we completed an open and fair tender process which attracted submissions from many operators, those who best met the criteria were selected and we have seen some existing businesses continue to operate in our parks and some new businesses being introduced. We can never guarantee renewal at the end of a contract, we have to conduct a process that is fair to all interested businesses. Mr. Cunio's business previously held the operating licences in both Encliff and Weston Parks and bid for both these this time, and Cunio's are a good operator and have been, you know, very valued by the Parks and Countryside Service, a much appreciated service to our parks users, so it's unsurprising to hear that support there, without a doubt. However, these licences were awarded to other businesses who submitted significantly higher offers. We would welcome the opportunity to work with Mr. Cunio again, and we would make you aware, Mr. Cunio, when further opportunities become available within our parks. When Mr. Cunio's held the Encliff Park pitch, they did have the Ruslins Road licence, however they didn't use this. Since the new operator has started last season, Mr. Cunio has exercised use of this pitch on Ruslins Road, which we fully accept Mr. Cunio is entitled to do, however, we would suggest that there is no public benefit to this, there being sufficient ice cream sales provision within close proximity to this pitch, as you can see on the map that we provided. The impact to the charity and council is a loss of thousands of pounds annually, which over the duration of the licence will be considerable, if there was a service public benefit to this, there may be a different argument, but we believe there isn't. And just for some further context, Encliff Park costs the Parks and Countryside Service, and we manage it on behalf of the charity as applicable, around 100,000 pounds to maintain only annually for the benefit of park users. The income from the ice cream concession classes, events and cafe mean that less core budget is required from the overall park's budget to support this. For sites, for example, Park and Cross Park, Norfolk Park, Longley Park or High Hazels, where income streams are far less or non-existent, the draw on the service budget is understandably greater, hence why we need to ensure we are maximising the income from the sites that we can. It's no surprise to anyone that Sheffield City Council has faced over a decade of government cuts that have impacted our services, and this means that non-essential services like parks have had to find other ways of maintaining and improving the hundreds of sites we're responsible for. For Parks and Countryside, the budget has decreased since 2018/19 from 4.9 million to 3.75 million, and in 2022/23, we're looking, sorry, that was 2022/23, we're looking at a further significant cut for the next financial year. What we are doing here is genuinely not trying to hurt a local business, but it's to ensure that we have the service our users would want and expect, that we have provided these at market value, and that we ensure that this is done as openly and as fairly as possible. The Parks and Countryside Service are genuinely sorry to Mr. Cunio that they have been impacted personally by this, but what we are objecting to, we believe is fair and transparent, and we hope that the committee can appreciate the Parks and Countryside Service's position. Just one final point to make, the Rivelland Park pitch that Mr. Cunio has applied for, you'll note that we didn't object to that because there is no other ice cream pitch within the vicinity, this is specifically related to a situation here, thank you.
Thank you, I'll open this up to questions then now, again, starting with Lewis, do you have any questions for Joe?
Thanks, Chair. Just on this 15,000 figure, obviously you say there's clear evidence and I appreciate you may not be able to go into some of the detail if it's sensitive, but is it possible to just give some insight into how that's been arrived at, please?
Yeah, so when the tender went out there, there was conversations from bidders around whether or not there would be other ice creams operating within the area, yeah, so we were given an indication of a value of a pitch, if Mr. Cunio would be to operate within the vicinity, or whether that would be kind of a pitch that's got no other operators within the area, so we have that indication, having carried out that tender process.
Thank you, and with the, you said that Mr. Cunio didn't use the Ruslins Road even though it was on the licence, why, why was it on the licence if that was the case?
So, as I understand it, Mr. Cunio has the opportunity to apply for a street trading licence, it wasn't on our licence, it's a highways licence, so Mr. Cunio can pay a few hundred pounds for a licence fee on the highways, that doesn't require Parks and Countryside consent because it's not our land, obviously pitches within the parks, the value of that is thousands of pounds, not hundreds, so it's not for me to speculate, but Mr. Cunio could hold a pitch there, then obviously use the pitch within Encliff Park because he had both those pitches.
Would highways not consult with Parks and Countryside about that?
We're not a core consultancy, but we are a consultancy, it might be, yeah, as I understand it, so we have been consulted, which is why we've objected to this, but in the past, Mr. Cunio's was operating the pitch within the park, so there were no, there was no grounds for consenting because that hadn't been flagged as an issue.
Has there been a situation before that you're aware of in relation to competing ice cream vans within Encliff Park or in the sort of vicinity of Encliff Park?
I believe there have, yes, in the past, however, that was before my time, so I wouldn't be able to go into the detail around that.
Was that in sort of the past 10 years or so?
Mr. Cunio's held that pitch for quite a number of years, obviously in this last year, we've put this back out to tender, so we're dealing with the, you know, the process now, but with regards to that, I can't really go into the history because I'm not aware enough of the detail.
Thank you, thanks, Chair.
Just a couple of things, right, what's the length of the tender at the moment, I mean, how, how long is the current vendor going to be there at the current price?
Three years.
Three years, and is the opportunity to negotiate the price within the three-year period, or is that tied for those three years?
There are opportunities within, with kind of, you know, seeking advice from legal and property services, where depending on the conditions of the licence, things could be renegotiated, but at the minute we're in a three-year, three-year agreement, so other than if people were to breach that, we wouldn't be putting that back out to tender, but in three years we would, and well, we're now into the second year of that, so in two years that pitch would go back out to tender.
So there's a further year running on the current contract?
Yeah, there's two more years at those sites, yeah.
Can I just check, are the street trading consents close to any other sort of, sort of prime locations?
Yeah, so Rivelland Park, which we mentioned, but there isn't an ice cream pitch within Rivelland Park, there is a cafe, but we've not objected to Rivelland Park because, as we said, there's no other ice cream offer, and a cafe alone is not necessarily, yeah, I totally take Neil's and Mr. Cunio's points on choice, so we didn't object to that one. Weston Park, there was a similar situation, which we would object to because we do have an ice cream vendor within Weston Park, there are a number of other sites in the city that where there are not ice cream vans, that we'd love to see ice cream vans up because there's not that offer there, but that situation hasn't arisen at the minute.
Thank you, and you've answered this, but just to be totally clear, the 15, the difference is, you feel that an oper, if there wasn't a trading consent near the park, you would be able to increase income from whoever won the tender by around about 15,000 pounds per annum?
Yes, so the pitch within the, within that park, with an ice cream vendor a few hundred metres away, the value of that pitch decreased, and the value of the pitch on the highways, you know, that's a few hundred pounds for the council, the value of the pitch within the, within Encliff Park is tens of thousands of pounds, therefore from a maintenance of the parks perspective, from a, yeah, overall council budget perspective, that's what we're looking at.
Yeah, and the vendors have said that they-
Yeah, multiple vendors, not one.
That they could increase the pitch by that much, thank you, that's all.
Yeah, just to clarify, when you say multiple vendors, like who, who are you talking about there?
The ice cream operators who applied for the tender when we went out to tender last year.
Right, so what did you say about them, sorry?
Yeah, so when the process went out there, there was conversations around whether there would be- would be other ice cream vendors within the vicinity. Obviously, Mr Cuneo held the highways pitch at that point, so we couldn't guarantee what would be happening into the future, but the, the pitch was held. So ice cream vendors talked about, well, if there was a pitch there, it would cost X, you know, the value of the pitch would be X if it wasn't there, if the pitch wasn't there, the value would be something else.
Right, okay, yeah, that's, thank you.
Thank you.
Shimla, is there anything you'd like to ask?
Yes, I just wanted to confirm about the tender process is a completely separate process which is done by the landowners and it isn't part of the street trading process application. Thank you.
Mr Cuneo, Mr Gibson, are there any questions you would like to ask?
I have just a few questions, Chair, thank you. Can we just go back to the statement of clear evidence of the loss of income? Can you just, can I just ask you, what is the clear evidence?
Yeah, that is from operators' bids.
The operator in the park?
Operators who bid for the pitch during the tender process.
You've got an operator now?
Yeah.
Are they now saying they can't have paid the tender that they agreed to pay?
It's not, I don't think it would be appropriate for me to comment on that, but in terms of the conversation we were having with operators when they were going through the tender process.
No, that's fine. You, you took the tender and it now seems that they now can't afford to pay the tender that they were suggesting they would pay.
I wouldn't say can't afford to pay the tender value, but at the start of the conversation of the, of the arrangement, there was a question mark over whether Mr Cuneo would continue at the pitch or use the pitch as it wasn't used previously.
No, that, that's fine. We, we, we're not debating whether or not over the ten, whether he won the tender, we're talking about the objection now to him trading on Ruslins Road. Okay, are you aware that the Parks Department have taken some highways land at Hunter's Bar, which is where Mr Cuneo used to have a van? And that land was then offered to Mr Cuneo at a fee of six and a half thousand pounds a year? So that would place, so if he pays you six and a half thousand pounds a year, you're quite happy to have competition in the, on the outskirts of the park. I mean, it's, it's, it's probably slightly closer to the current trend vendor in the park than the Ruslins Road site is, but it seems extraordinary that you're saying you don't want anybody in competition to your vendor in the park, yet you're prepared to offer Mr Cuneo a space right at the gates of the park if he pays you six and a half thousand?
I think that matter is probably, that was being dealt with by the, by a separate situation because of the discussions we were having together with Mr Cuneo and was dealt with by the ombudsman in terms of the pitch there. The value wasn't agreed on because of market value. Had that pitch been put out to tender, the, the value of that would come out considerably higher. However, that was done kind of in consultation with Mr Cuneo because of the situation that had arisen. But I think that's probably outside of the scope of the licensing committee.
Right, yeah, I think it is a bit within that realm.
My, my point just being is that you didn't, you weren't objecting to having competition there when you were going to get income from him. Is it true that you are now talking to highways about taking the land at Rivlin Park as well into the park to remove it from highways so it won't come under a street trading licence? But it would, he'd have to, you could then put that spot right to tender as well?
That has not come to me at all and it'd be my area of responsibility, so I think that's very unlikely. That's not something I've heard of. If it was off social media, perhaps that's just speculation and council bashing.
Yeah, sorry, I, I think it might just be good to concentrate on the facts here today because I know there's a number of parks and things, different schemes, but we're here, my committee, to discuss this specific thing.
My, my point being that I feel that parks are not, have no objection to having competition if it's on their grounds. Thanks, Chair, that's all the questions.
Thank you then. It's actually back to you to sum up now. He does say in the papers a maximum of five minutes, but there are no clocks in here, so take as long as you wish to sum up and the same opportunity will go to the Mr Cuneo.
I think I've covered all my key points, but just to, you know, that's not, you know, we're not objecting on the grounds that we, any random grounds. This is very much on the grounds of Encliff Park and what we are seeing here. The Rivlin Park is an example, that is not at all, which is why we didn't object. That's come to me around the same time and we did not object to that for those same reasons. This isn't personal, this is very much about us being in a situation here as we are within the Parks and Countryside Service, as we are in the council, trying to do what we can for our parks. We know the value of those assets, we're just trying to do what we can from a fair and open perspective and to support a number of businesses that we work with, not just one. But I'm sorry that it's come to this and I hope we can reach a, yeah, satisfactory conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Cuneo, Mr Gibson, would you like to sum up?
Thank you very much, thank you, Chair. I mean, we have every sympathy with parks trying to raise as much money as possible to keep the parks going on. I know how difficult it is. I did work very closely with parks while I was a councillor and I know the financial difficulties they've got. But I think it's very unfortunate that they, they want to almost extend their control into areas outside the parks and I think it's evidenced by the local statements from the local councillor, statements from Ashley at the Encliff Park Cafe, pointing out what a valued resource Mr Cuneo's van on Ruslins Road is, the huge number of messages on social media, the messages to the Stars website after the article on Saturday Night from the public saying that how much they value the asset. And I think, I hope the committee would consider that it's good and right to have fair and open competition and, and it's good for the public and it benefits everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. That, that's been really helpful to the committee. Could we have the options, please, Shimla?
Yes, of course. Options to the committee is one, to grant the renewal for a static street trading consent; two, to grant the renewal application with amendments; thirdly, to defer the matter for further consideration; and finally, to refuse the renewal application. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Could I ask you to now leave with the licensing officer and as soon as we've made a decision, we'll invite you back in. Thank you once again, everybody, for your, your time and your representations this morning. You will gather from the length of deliberations that it has been a difficult decision for us because we were quite conflicted on this. And I think you mentioned, we, we would love to see parks' income maximised, but we haven't been convinced today on the actual figure and the fact that we have only received one concern regarding the, the application from Mr Cuneo, yet we've received a lot of representations in favour of him and his, his reputation for being reliable and providing a good service to the people Sheffield has today stood him in good stead. So on this occasion, the decision of the subcommittee is to grant the application. That may not be the case on future occasions, but certainly for, for today, we, we are happy for Mr Cuneo to consider trading on Ruslins Road. Well, that's the decision of licensing subcommittee this morning and thank you again.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Councillor Chin. Thank you for your work. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.